For Caroline County to order. Thank you all for being here. At this time, I would ask you to stand as we do our invocation and our pledge of allegiance. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for bringing us all here together tonight. I ask for your protection and guidance as people travel home later this evening. And I ask that you continue to guide us in your way and in wise decisions for the best for Caroline County. Things I ask in your name. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which extends, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Opening board comments with Stur Underwood. Would you like to start us off?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, everyone. Thanks for coming. I do have just a couple of brief comments. I went by the county park on Saturday and I was really pleased with the number of children and parents and grandparents that I saw. However, I had some concerns that some of the parents in wheelchairs and walking apparatuses weren't able to get down to the field to see their children participating, their grandchildren. And while we're thinking about spending capital funds, I'd like for us to take a look at the needs for park and rec. And I would really like to see us put a large amount of money into parks and rec. I think I have a slide of the amount of property that we own around the park. If you would just indulge me to put that up and show you that we have 184 acres of land there on Devil's Three Jump. And it would just make sense for us to begin to talk with Parks and Rec. Here's the slide. All of the green is on both sides of Devil Three Jump. But you see, we have 184,000 acres there.
That's schools.
Okay. 184. I'm sorry. 184 acres. And the property in front of the middle school, I thought we owned it, but that belongs to the high school. That belongs to the schools. But we have 184 acres. I think we can make that park something very special for the county. We do a really nice job. We're talking about spending capital funds. But I think if we could do a really nice job of having a state-of-the-art park for our children that's accessible to grandparents and people who have wheelchairs and make sure that everyone gets an opportunity to see their children participate. So that's my comments on Park and Rec.
Thank you, Mr. Underwood.
Yesterday, I was able to meet with Mr. Calvin Taylor, the president of the, I mean, the chairman of the school board. And I had a chance to tour the cottages that they put up for students. They are very, they are very nice. My concern is about the two-year-old, the second graders traveling to and from when there's bad weather. And the steps are metal. I'm just concerned about what that, what kind of, kind of issues may come if we have bad weather and icing. So those were two, but they are very nice and teachers have done a great job of decorating and they really do look nice. I checked the bathrooms and all the facilities. That's a very nice, very nice job done by schools to get that ready for students. Next reminder that the state fair starts on Friday. I'm going to talk to Marlene. Hopefully, we can get a couple of tickets for each board member to get a chance to go over to the state fair, one of the larger venues in the state. I forget what the actual number was last year, but well, in the hundreds of thousands of folks have been coming to the state fair. So that's really one of our draws. Also, last week, I went down to Halifax County to take a look at the acre solar that they have there on 200-something acres. Actually, I was very pleased. I was kind of worried about going down, but I said, well, I'll go down and take a look. But I was pleasantly surprised of the location, the facility, the management of the bees on the property, the, the number of goats and how they're herded and moved. So it was, I was very surprised. I had some consternation about going and then I decided to go. But it was very surprising because I was one of the people who said absolutely not. But it kind of gave me some things to think about. I was able to talk to another supervisor from Halifax County about revenue and what it means to the county. One thing that I was concerned about is it did not in any way help the residents of Halifax County in terms of lowering the electricity bill. That was one of the drawbacks that I was concerned about. But I wanted everyone to know that I did travel down. On October the 9th, I have a constituent meeting at Second Mount Zion Baptist Church at 6:30. And Urban Grid had asked to be on the agenda to introduce themselves to the county. They do have a county office here, so they will be at that meeting just for transparency. And those are my comments, Madam Chair, and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Underwood. Mr. Sealy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. In Bowling Green this Friday is Music on the Green, followed by Saturday, September 27th with Clean Sweep, which is usually a very big event in the town of Bowling Green. And then a week from Friday is the last Music on the Green for the year. So just trying to make everybody aware and come on out and have a good time. Thank you, Madam Chair.
So the last, the last one is the 17th.
The last one is, the last one is, we have the one at the end of September. It's the first Friday in October is the last one.
Okay, gotcha. All right. And I just wanted to say that enjoy this weather, this beautiful time. Enjoy the fair. Support Bowling Greens Clean Sweep so that people don't have to haul things they want to thin out back into their house. There's always somebody who could use some slightly used furniture and decorating items. Also, we will have some presentations following board comments. And it's going to be a little bit of a repeat for a couple of us up here with GWRC comes up to get their report. And we'll also have one for the Valley Grant and the report from Wendy Sneed on SNAP. So if you are watching online, you might want to hang in for those reports. And I also want to thank VDOT for getting the lines on the new pavement through the Towneport Row and their continued work up the road. It's looking really nice. Be glad when they finish with 17 so people can start using that. I haven't been down there for a couple of days to see if they've completed that yet. But do want to give them credit for the fact that they are working on the roads in Caroline. That is the end of my comments. Mr. Forehand.
I'll forego any comments.
Mr. Thomas.
I just have the one, next Tuesday, September 30th, I will have a constituent meeting at the Visitor Center on Rogers and Clark Boulevard near Carmel Church from 7:00 PM to 9:00 PM. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Mr. Black.
Yeah, just a few comments. Last night at our GWRC meeting, we were discussing water issues. One of the things that we need to be, and I just talked to Mr. Sheville about it, but we're, we are working on our water master plan with King George. It's a requirement in the state. We have to work with King George and Stafford, Spotsylvania, Fredericksburg have to work together on theirs. So Mr. Sheville said that they are moving forward with theirs. They've already met, so that's a good thing. One of the other things is Mr. Forehand and I, sometime in October, we have not nailed down the dates. We're actually going to do multiple joint constituent meetings in my district and his district to talk about the various things that are going on. And finally, I'd like to kind of just kind of maybe get a little personal here with, I think sometimes that we don't understand that some of the supervisors up here that we're human. And whether it be Democrat or Republican, at the end of the day, you know, sometimes some of the political rhetoric is, I think that's going on in this country right now is extremely dangerous. You know, I saw a thing where it's like the right wing and the left wing, it's the, it makes up the eagle. And it's really concerning when you have people say, oh, that, you know, it's off the hand, off the hand, oh, they need to be shot. It's not something to joke about. It's not something, we've seen what's happened. And it is, it sometimes can be a little bit scary. So I think when we make comments or we post stuff online, it's easy to vilify someone. I don't think that any supervisor up here, even if I disagree with them 100%, I don't think that any supervisor up here is trying to do something bad for Caroline County. And I think sometimes that the rhetoric that gets put out there is that that's the case. So those are my comments and I appreciate it. Ms. Long, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Black. Well, that takes us to any amendments to the agenda. Is there anything anyone would like to change and remove from the agenda? Do I have a motion for the agenda to be accepted? So moved. Second.
Madam Chair, my second, I would like to have the county administrator add the project list to our agenda. We missed that. It's not in our packet. Or it's not on the electronic one.
Just on the first meeting.
Okay.
It will be on the first meeting of the month.
Well, I'd like one to hear. If we can get one, I'd like one to hear.
Can you email Mr. Thomas? Email us one.
So we're just not, we're not going to amend it then? We're just gonna?
Okay, so I have a motion and a second to accept the agenda as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? So moved. Appointments. Have we had, Mr. Sealy, you are speaking to someone?
I have, I have someone in mind. I just didn't get to finish following up with them. So hopefully I'll be able to wrap that up by the next meeting.
But that is for the Board of Zoning Appeals. Does anyone else have, anyone? All right. Would you continue then with your, Mr. Thomas?
I've got the next one for, actually the first one, but.
Okay, so we'll continue with the Board of Zoning Appeals, Mr. Sealy. I'll wait for you for next month on that. And Mr. Thomas?
I have for the Building Code Board of Appeals, Manapanae District. Believe we recommend this person to the judge and I'm going to recommend Mr. Chris Caldwell of the Manapanae District. So we just need a second.
I have a motion and a second for Chris Caldwell for the Building Code Board of Appeals. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? So moved. We've already done the consent agenda. So let's skip down to do presentations. Go back up for presentations since we got all those little things out of the way. And we are going to start tonight with the George Washington Regional Commission. Seems like I just saw these faces on, even though I zoomed last night. And Mr. Black was there, so.
Okay.
Get on the speakers. Can you hear it, David?
It's Chip's badge. That's what it is.
It just started.
Are you off?
I'm on.
Seems like when I'm on, it goes away.
Test, test, test. Test, test.
Can you hear the static in the auditorium?
Okay. If we turn off our mics, maybe?
Turn them on more. It's still. It's gone.
Now it's gone. That was it, David. I know what you did, David.
Before troubleshooting, I just want to clarify, I just checked. Board of Building Code Appeals members are appointed by this board, so not by the court. But I take it that your motion is to make that appointment.
Yes, thank you.
I'm not going to touch anything.
It was clear before you got up.
Madam Chair, Supervisor, Staff, thank you for having us tonight. I'm Chip Boils, Executive Director with the George Washington Regional Commission. Got with me Kate Gibson, who is Deputy Director. Kate is going to present. She can do it and talk a lot faster than I can. Our fiscal year 2025 annual report. As the Chair Lady said, two of you have already heard this as you approved it last night. For the rest of you, it is fresh off the press. The ink is still wet from getting approved last night at our GWRC board meeting. But Kate will go through fairly briefly what our programs, as well as our financial success for fiscal year '25. But I did want to say just a couple of things. We're here also to answer any questions that you may have that's outside of our program that she'll present, as well as to talk about a few things that we have that will be ongoing into fiscal year 2026 and beyond. The other thing I wanted to start with is just to pinpoint a few things that we've been doing specific to Caroline County. Most recently, as recent as yesterday, our transportation staff was working with your staff on working towards very good projects for smart scale for transportation improvements, not just for the next smart scale round, but two years from then, which will be smart scale round number eight, getting projects in the pipeline that are good, strong projects that hopefully will score well. As you all know, we're competing against our region, as well as the whole state, for VDOT dollars for roadway and transportation improvements. So along with that, and the Chair Lady has also been participating in, we have just created in this past fiscal year a Rural Transportation Advisory Committee that is specific to Caroline and King George County, separate from FAMPO with the urban districts, so that we can try to provide more direct assistance to King George and Caroline, where the unique transportation needs and opportunities are quite different than up and down Interstate 95. So we're real proud of the work that's been going on there. We're also really happy to say that Caroline is one of the, it is the only county that's eligible for a new federal program, the Southeastern Crescent Regional Commission, where there is money available to specific counties, all the way from Maryland down to North Florida and into Alabama. We were able to work and had six applications submitted for Caroline. Of the six, two were invited to submit for the final applications. And we're waiting now to hear from, from the Southeast Crescent Regional Commission of whether those two, one of the two or any of those will be awarded. We spoke with them just Friday and they told us hopefully those announcements will be made within the next couple of weeks. A lot of things are very slow coming out of Washington right now, so we'll see. Yes, we sure do. The, the two that were recommended forward was the town of Port Royal and the town of Bowling Green for water and sewer improvements. Yep. And if you're interested, we've got a list of the others, but those were the two that were invited to move forward. Finally, and Supervisor Long, Supervisor Black heard this last night, but we've also implemented a new septic repair replacement program where we've received about $900,000 to help people with failing septic tanks throughout our five jurisdiction region. We can either replace the septic tanks, repair the septic tanks, drain fields, or if luckily a public system runs by in front of the residents, we can actually connect them to a public sanitary sewer system. Right now, we've got 39 applications that we've received across the region and six of those are in Caroline County. We'll continue to work with you and with your staff, trying to get the word out just to let people know that this program is in place. Just to, it's, it's not really fancy, but just to give you an idea, a failing system within our program is that if in the tank or the drain field itself, the septic has to be rising up through the ground. Just being backed up into house can be an indicator of a failing system, but it doesn't define a failing system because that could just be a blockage. But when it's coming up out of the ground, our money was created by, for environmental programs. So when it's coming up out of the ground, which means it's untreated, septic is working its way into the tributaries, the rivers and on towards the Chesapeake Bay, which is what we're trying to get cleaned up. But so far of those 39 applications, we have six in Caroline County. The other thing last night, our board approved that you and your staff will be seeing coming up during your budget deliberations is that they voted to allow us to ask the local governments for a 2% rate increase. For Caroline, it's a very small, small dollar amount. But the other thing we'll be asking you to consider is a number of years ago, GWRC oversaw a regional legislative information program. And so we're putting together some dollar figures to come back to you later to see if that's something you may would want to engage with through the GWRC with all the four other jurisdictions, beginning with FY '27. So with that, that's just kind of my very long introduction. But Kate will walk us through what we did in FY '25 and then we're here to answer any questions, whether past, the present or future.
Before you sit down, Chip, if I could, on the septic program, there's also a financial, you have to be in a certain income for that repair. Is that true?
Well, no, it's open to everybody. The higher the income you are, the more you have to match. The lower the income, then the less you have to match. And one of the things we're also looking at, we have applied for some money. One of the things we're running into is that you need to certify that you have a failing system, which in some cases mean you have to have a licensed consultant to come in and they can certify that it's failing. Some families don't have the few hundred dollars that takes. So we're trying to apply for some extra funding to be able to pay for that for the lowest of income families. If we, you know, for, for lack of $500, they might be missing out on a $50,000 septic repair.
Thank you. I just wanted to get that information out. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
And I also wanted to clarify that I do try to attend the rural transportation meetings, but I am not a member because it's, it's all those traffic school people sitting around a table, talking. And I get to listen and then make, raise my hand and make comments occasionally. But I learn a lot being there, so I appreciate them letting me sit in.
Well, we certainly welcome yours, as well as any of the other elected officials or interested citizens that want to be part of that because it, it takes the input from everybody.
No, again, I appreciate it. Ms. Kate.
So I think that in your packet, we had a draft version of the annual report, but you all should have the nice printed bound copies in front of you. As Chip mentioned, this was approved last night and we did make an edit to it that was requested by a board member. So you have the final version in front of you, hot off the press. So for those listening in that might not be familiar with the George Washington Regional Commission, we are a government agency serving our five local government members, which is Caroline County, as well as the city of Fredericksburg and the counties of King George, Spotsylvania and Stafford. So this is our fiscal year 2025 annual report and it really highlights the broad range of activities that we undertake in service of our local government members. So we start off with a letter from our Board Chair, Ms. Lori Hayes. And she really highlights the partnerships that drive the work of GWRC, both among the jurisdictions, among staff, and also with our regional stakeholders. The next item in the report is a letter from our Executive Director, Chip Boils. And he really highlights some of our financial and programmatic successes. So on the financial side, we had a return of investment last year of $18 for every one dollar that you all and the other local governments invest through your annual contributions to us. We also had a clean, unmodified audit and we had a positive financial income for the year, which I'll highlight towards the end of the report. On the programmatic side, we updated our strategic plan. We've also been engaging with our military installations. And we've been working with the Chamber of Commerce, Virginia Association of Planning District Commissions, and having many different conversations, both locally and within the state. Next, we highlight our FY '25 commissioners and their positions as of last year. And let's see, Supervisor Black was our second Vice Chair and is now the first Vice Chair this year. Moving into our five-year strategic plan, we did make our first update to that strategic plan in January. Our strategic plan is really focused on our areas of focus, which is developing the economy, preserving the environment, building community health and facilitating transportation solutions. We also have some sections in the, in that strategic plan about how we can enhance our organizational effectiveness in order to carry out all of those different programs. So the first, you know, program being our economic development program, we run Go Virginia Region Six for this region, as well as the Northern Neck and the Middle Peninsula. Through that program, we funded six projects last year totaling $1.1 million in various different subject matters. So Business Accelerator with the Black Chamber of Commerce, cybersecurity, environmental work. Also, we funded the UMW Practice Management Certification, which is to give a certification for folks who can actually manage a primary care office. That's been a kind of a missing piece that that project is addressing. We also held our second annual economic development summit. That was at the Jupson Alumni Center in Fredericksburg. And we will be holding the third annual one this upcoming April. We kicked off our comprehensive economic development strategy planning effort. So we're one of only a few regions in the state that does not have a SEDS. And so we've been working with the five local jurisdictions, as well as various community partners, to develop that strategy and that's ongoing. And Chip already mentioned the Southeastern Crescent Regional Commission, but we've been working on that and you already heard about the projects that have been submitted under that program. Moving into our environmental services program, we did launch our septic relief program, which we're very excited about. At the time of this printing, we had nine households underway with projects. Now we're up to 13 projects that are underway and more applications coming in every day. So we're very excited about that program. We've continued to work with partners on our coastal zone management and Chesapeake Bay water quality programs. Those are ongoing. And then we also have been doing some green infrastructure projects, which is really fun. We got over $600,000 from the Department of Environmental Quality and we've partnered with the Friends of the Rappahannock to identify areas throughout the region that could benefit from green infrastructure. So think permeable pavers, conservation landscaping, rain gardens, those types of things. We've implemented projects so far in the city of Fredericksburg, King George and Spotsylvania Counties. But currently, we're working on a project at Caroline High School, as well as North Stafford High School, because we do want to make sure all five localities benefit from this program. We've also been working on residential projects throughout the region. Moving into housing and community health, we staffed the Fredericksburg Regional Continuum of Care, which oversees homeless services for the region. One thing to note on the COC is that they completed their first formal GAPS analysis last year. That was to look at all of the services. That was to look at all of the services that are provided by different entities and identify where some of the gaps are and what some of the solutions to those gaps might be. We also administer the Emergency Food and Shelter Program, which is FEMA funding that comes to the region kind of sporadically. And so whenever they tell us that they have money available, we help allocate those to projects and get those to nonprofits in the region. We also have the Regional Housing Assembly, which is our newer affordable housing effort that brings together stakeholders from many different organizations to talk about how we work together on affordable housing. That's also part of the Community Health Improvement Plan that the hospital and the health department jointly have been working on. And that is the group that puts on the annual housing summit. So last year, we had our second annual housing summit, and this year, the housing summit will be on October 16th. So if anybody's interested in attending, please let us know. We would love to get you there and sign you up for that. Moving on to transportation demand management, hopefully folks are familiar with our GW Ride Connect program. That is our free commuter assistance program. Basically, we can help you figure out how to do a carpool, van pool, slugging, take transit, any way to get to work other than driving alone. So last year, we had a 24% increase in applications for assistance. We also won two awards for that program. So one was a collaboration and cooperation award for our partnership with the Pentagon and OmniRide, and another was our best marketing campaign for our Revolutionize Your Commute campaign with the tagline, Together We Ride. So that was really fun. We kind of leaned into the George Washington theme there. On the Vanpool Connections Program, we reduced 14.9 million miles driven last year through that program. And that program also raises over a million dollars every year to go back into capital transit programs. We also, you may not know, that we run a van pool self-insurance program for the entire state of Virginia. So 62% of the vans insured through that program are actually from our region, which is why we are so heavily involved in that program. But that's with a partnership through the state, and we had a 17% growth rate last year. On the transportation planning side, we have the Fredericksburg Area Metropolitan Planning Organization, which covers the city as well as Stafford and Spotsylvania Counties. They had several major efforts last year, including the river crossing study, looking at smart scale round six results and figuring out how to be even more competitive for smart scale round seven, updating the allocation process for some of their federal funds, and applying for street, safe streets and roads for all grants. On the rural side, which covers Caroline and King George, we did start the Rural Transportation Advisory Committee, as Chip mentioned. So that's been really successful to get VDOT, staff from Caroline and King George Counties, GWRC, some of our military partners and other stakeholders in the room to really work together on transportation issues. We also completed the Dahlgren Bicycle and Pedestrian Safety Plan for King George, as well as the Carmel Church Transportation Report for Caroline County. And we've also been providing support on smart scale applications for the rural localities. Next is our financial report. So we had 5.6 million in total revenue and 5.4 million in total expenses, which means we had a net income of over $150,000, which was very positive for us. Last year, as a comparison, we had an net income of $95,000. Most of the increase was due to joining the Virginia Investment Pool, which has been very successful for GWRC. Finally, we have a nice photo of our staff. Can't talk well highly enough of our staff. We have a really amazing staff working on all these various programs and, you know, economic development, environment, housing, community health, transportation. Like, we have so many great people in our office with really great knowledge in those areas. I think that's all I have, but I'm happy to happy to answer any questions that you all might have, and thank you for the opportunity.
Does anyone have any questions? I guess. No?
One, the.
Mr. Thomas.
The Carmel Church, as it says, the Carmel Church Village Report, was that given to our economic development director when it was produced or it's just not being released?
Um, I think it probably would have been given to your planning director, but I don't, I'm not fully sure of the status, but we can definitely find out.
Okay, I was just curious as to the flow of information. I know it came out in June of 2025. I was just wondering where it went from there. Thank you.
Absolutely. I'm just gonna take advantage of this moment, too. All these transportation things are great, and I'm gonna try to get to as many of the rural transportation meetings as I can. But one thing that I think we need in the rural counties is transportation for people who need to get to medical appointments, people who are in wheelchairs or non-mobile. They're leaning heavily on, you know, fire or rescue when it's really an appointment because they don't have any other way. And, I mean, that's, that's a job. It's a business somebody could create if GWRC maybe helped them along.
I think there would definitely be interest in having that conversation. I know there are some stakeholders in the region that are very interested in having the conversation about microtransit, which might be something that could work in the more rural areas, but also just creative solutions as far as partnering with healthy generations or looking at different models specifically for medical appointments.
Mr. Adwood.
I do have a question, as you brought that up. Does the Regional Commission work with Rappahannock area on aging, healthy generations? Because we do, I'm on the board there, and we do provide transportation to and from medical appointments. I was wondering if maybe the two parties can get together. Because I just looked at our data, I think we serviced over, well over 1,000 folks last year from Caroline for medical appointments. So maybe the two could have a conversation.
Absolutely. Yes, they actually run a mobility committee. Yeah, the mobility options, and then they have a committee where folks from GW Ride Connect serve on that committee to coordinate. Because like I said, GW Ride Connect really focuses more on commuter assistance, whereas Healthy Generations is focusing more on medical appointments. But we do coordinate with them. We work closely with them. Absolutely.
Anyone else? All right, thank you very much. We appreciate you being here.
Thank you for having us.
Madam Chairperson, honorable board members, my name is David Sadler. I'm Director of Information Technology for the county. Being that we have about another year left in Nevada grant construction phase, I felt it only fitting that we come here tonight and give you an update on where we stand in those projects. So we'll start out by covering existing infrastructure that residents of Caroline County can use to get connected that already exists. So we want to make sure that everyone is aware that Comcast has an existing footprint in Western Caroline. The areas shown in red on that map are the estimated existing footprint of Comcast. This includes areas around Ladysmith and Carmel Church, Ladysmith Village, Lake Landor, Pendleton, Lake Caroline, Belmont, and Caroline Pines. So if you live in those red highlighted areas, your provider is most likely Comcast. That should be available to you. You can get a connection by going to www.xfinity.com or call the number shown on the screen, 1-877-338-9791. If you also live west of 95, Caroline West, the Vadi 2023 Project West completed. So if you live in an area that's indicated by the pink dots on this map, your provider is most likely Verizon, offering the FiOS home internet. If you're interested in getting that service, Verizon.com/FIOSfaster or call 1-888-548-5833.
I can't see any of the landmarks on that, or where are we?
Basic, basically, the residents of the of those areas should be familiar with where those dots are, especially if they're in that. So that's Jericho Road.
Caroline Church Road.
Or County Line Church Road all the way up to almost the county line.
Okay. Caroline's a big county. Just wanted to make sure I had the spots close to the right place.
Yes, ma'am. That's Jericho.
Thank you.
So this map shows the existing Breeze Line plant. So areas that are indicated in yellow or purple are in the existing Breeze Line areas. If you're interested in signing up for service and you live in those areas, www.breezeline.com or call 1-888-536-9600. Again, if you live in these areas, 1-888-536-9600. Note, that number is different than a number I want to give you in a couple of minutes, but there's a reason for that. So since our, the beginning of our broadband expansion efforts back in 2019, it is projected that by October 1st, Caroline County, the Department of Housing and Community Development, Breeze Line, and Verizon will have expanded service to 1,798 previously unserved locations. Our goal is to make a broadband connection available to over 4,823 previously unserved locations by the end of next year. The project, the Vadi 2023 Carolina East Project, is currently on schedule. However, at this time, we do continue to monitor Rappahannock Electric Co-op pole attachments and power supplies for areas of delay, as these are the two areas at risk at this time. Now, this map, again, you can't see a lot of the landmarks. However, the residents in these areas can, will recognize if they live in that areas. So residents living on Pendleton Road, Mount Cloud Road, File Road, Kids Fork Road, or Self Lane, this is a new area. This is GCR05 that just opened up. So this is late-breaking information. If you live in those areas, you haven't had an internet connection available to you prior, but now they're open, we recommend that you talk to Reggie Spivey, Breeze Line Sales, That's 410-490-6082. That's his direct number. The reason why we're recommending that you call Reggie is Reggie has access to flash sales and deals that are open that you will not get offered if you call the 888 number. So if you live in that area, contact Reggie directly. So with this area open in GCR05, that makes GCR04 and GCR05 open for sale as we speak. Again, 410-490-6082. So that's areas north and basically south of Sparta and kind of west of Sparta. Four more areas, GCR02, GCR03, GCR06, and GCR07 are very near completion, and they are projected to be finished by October 1st, so that's next week. Stay tuned to the Caroline County website and the YouTube channel for announcements. Even though we're not set up to do another regular report until October 20th, as these areas open up, we're going to announce those as soon as they're open for sale. So stay tuned to the county website and our YouTube channel. Four additional areas, GCV 11, 13, 14, and 15 are near completion and are projected to be completed by December 1st. So we have a lot of areas dropping really quick, and as soon as these areas are completed and open for sale, we'll announce those on the website and on our YouTube channel. Construction will begin in the remaining areas over the next three months. So there are additional areas that are going to drop right around the first of the year. So please just stay tuned and watch as these numbers start to grow really fast at this point. It's an exciting time in the project, a very busy time. CSX railroad crossings, we have three of the four complete. We have one that we're having some issues with, but we have a remediation plan that we're working through now to get that resolved to, in an attempt to avoid any delays that that could cause to the project up in the north in the Woodford area. At this time, there's no extension necessary for this project. However, we continue to monitor project closely for areas of possible delay. So if there is a delay, we may have to get an extension of the project. However, we're working to try to avoid those so that the project will complete on time. Residents that need more information can go to the broadband page on the county website. When you get there, there's a big orange button right in the center of the page, submit your question. You click on that, and you can do this from a cell phone or from a computer. So if you don't have internet, but you have a cell phone service, you can get there. You can submit your question from there. Questions that are submitted there come directly to me, and we respond as quickly as we possibly can. Also, we will have members of the Broadband Advisory Committee present at the following events, and we look forward to seeing people from the community come up and talk to us about the project or ask any questions. Supervisor Underwood's Community Meeting, Second Mount Zion Church, October 9, 2025 at 6:30 PM. The Bowling Green Harvest Festival on October 18 from 9 to 4, and the Frog Level Fall Festival and Parade, October 25 from 8 to 2. So again, we will be present there and available to ask any questions or answer any questions that you may have. Our next broadband regularly scheduled update is scheduled for Monday, October 20 at 7 PM. We ask that if you're interested in your following these broadband projects, please subscribe to the county YouTube channel so that you're notified if we release an update that's out of the normal schedule. So stay tuned to YouTube and the county website for updates and areas as they complete. And just know that there are going to be areas dropping later next week, the following week. So things are going to be changing really fast from here on out. A lot of the construction's been done, and they're just in the stages, the final stages of finishing up the project so they can go for sale. That completes my report. Are there any questions?
Mr. Sadler, great presentation and catching us up. And before I open it up, you know, my question's going to be Page Road, because I didn't hear you say that. Is the railroad crossing issue slowing that down?
Not Page Road. Pedro Crossing is complete. That's one of the three that we did get complete. But as we finish up and open for sale, the areas south of that 207, 301 line, the construction within the next few weeks will start moving into the areas north of that line. So as we get into those areas and construction starts, we'll be able to project a little bit more definite date and time that those areas will open. But at this time, we're just a little bit too early in the project to tell that.
Any questions? Mr. Black?
Yeah, I, first of all, I just want to, I can thank you and Mr. Thomas and Mr. Seeland, everyone who was part of this committee that was, you know, helped to, you know, make sure that the citizens of Caroline got internet. This is, this is, this is a great, great job, so we really appreciate what you've done. And I know there's a lot of hard work that's gone in, so thank you very much. Just have a quick question on the western side of the county. There were a few residents that were kind of left behind because of, you know, they were served by, you know, you might have one house served by, you know, Comcast on a road, like, for example, Charlesburg Road. And then you said you were working on, where are we on that?
So the preliminary awards have been made by the Virginia BEAT Program, and they're at NTIA for final approval. If they're approved, there is a provider that will provide a fiber connection to those areas on Charlesburg Road, as well as further out on Partlow Road.
Partlow Road, yeah.
Right near the county line. But they, they've identified the BEAT Program, which is a federal program, identified areas that were missed in Nevada projects. The area that you're speaking of is, was missed because one provider had overrepresented their services. area, which made them ineligible for VATTI, and then they came back and corrected it after their awards were made, and it was too late at that point. The BEAT program was just sent to the federal government for, or NTIA for their consideration and hopefully approval. We don't have a timeline on that, but once, we're keeping an eye on that. If it gets approved, if it doesn't get approved, then, you know, we may have to go back and make, you know, that program may have to go back and make some changes. The BEAT program in Virginia is being administered by the Virginia Department of Housing and Community Development, just like VATTI, so.
So would, but the only ones, so would this only apply basically on the western side of the county? It wouldn't apply to any, like, you're like, in other words, you're not going to have this situation, because I know you're doing the, the build-out on the eastern side of the county right now. It would not apply to any houses on the eastern side of the county, would it, like, as far as them needing it because a particular road was skipped over and?
If there, if there are areas that were missed, they will be identified in the project as well. So it's the entire county.
Right.
My concern is that the FCC map that those, those BEAT awards were made from, we looked, and I was kind of, and again, this is all preliminary, so it's not final or approved. But I was kind of surprised that the numbers that they were showing is unserved, but they have a provider that they've identified and recommended for every one that was missed. But looking more closely at the map, for example, I did see one warehouse with 15 tractor trailers parked around it that was identified as 16 unserved homes. So, so the accuracy of those maps are not, they're just not there.
Right.
But I did manually verify Charlesburg Road and Partlow Road to make sure that they're covered. And I've actually spoken with the provider that was awarded those initially, and they're, they're excited.
So, so when you're talking a major provider, you're going to talk about, like, your Comcast or your, or your Xfinity is, I mean, or your, you know, FiOS, is that what you're saying?
It's an existing provider that has a good customer base and a record of, of successful. It's, it's not a startup.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Underwood?
Yeah, Dave, I didn't see very much on the southern end.
Lot going on on the southern end. Now, the timeframe for that 15 and 16 area, which is down right at Frog Level and just above that.
Right.
Probably around the 1st of the year. I'm trying to get a more act, more complete date. Now, when I give you these dates, know that, that
They could go either way, yeah.
We've extended those dates beyond what we're being told. So if we're telling you January 1, it could be well before that. They are really focusing on everything south. I think you've probably noticed construction along Route 30 all the way to the county line. So they're working really hard down there. I would say by the first year, you're going to have a lot of that area connected.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else have a question?
We, we actually completed today an onsite visit with the HCD and Breeze Line. So they came in to look at the project and the progress that's been made. So we're excited. It's, it's an exciting time to be in broadband, and hopefully we'll be able to get all this across the line.
Very good. Yes, Mr. Thomas?
For those that are listening again, David, there's a number that they can call to find out where they are in the process and when they're expected to be connected. Could you give that for us one more time?
So if, if they need information about their specific part of the project or an ETA, the best thing is go to the county website, go to the broadband page, and click that submit your question, that orange button, so I can look it up, because we're working with multiple different timelines that we have, and, and I can get back to them to a possible timeline. We do have a lot of interest, Mrs. Long, in your area up north asking when. They haven't seen a lot of construction as of yet, other than those railroad crossings, but they're about to. It's, it's going to get real busy up there. So just if you're in an area, we may not be able to give you a very specific ETA if you're, especially if you're north, because there's no real heavy construction going on up there yet. But as soon as we know these, you know, we, we do our best to stay engaged with the public, and we appreciate the number of citizens that, that have remained engaged with us in this project. It's been really encouraging. We know that, that people need internet, and we're doing everything possible to make it happen as quickly as possible. And with the support of this board, we've made a lot of progress.
Thank you so much, and thank staff and everyone for all their good work. And we'll just hold on. By next year, we won't need to have a report. Everything will be done.
Hopefully. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that takes us to the update on our Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, or SNAP, as we all call it, this Wendy Snead.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me? Good. Wendy Snead, Social Services. I appreciate being able to come at this time and not talking to you at 9 or 10 o'clock at night. I'm much more coherent, so that's a good thing. SNAP is the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program. These are benefits that can be used like cash to buy eligible food items from authorized retailers. To qualify, households must meet specific income eligibility limits, and this varies based on household size. Anyone can go to commonhelp.gov and screen for eligibility, and/or they can apply for benefits. Another way to apply for benefits is to call 833-522-5582, or they can come to our Department of Social Services right upstairs and apply in person on a paper application. I wanted to talk about, here we go. What SNAP looks like in the county. This map has a dot for every household in the county that receives SNAP this month. As you can see, the clusters of where there are SNAP are clusters of where a lot of people live, because people who receive SNAP live where everyone else lives. The map has the locations of the farmers' markets just to show how they can access that, because they can utilize their SNAP benefits at those farmers' markets. I want to talk a little bit about statistics. Actually, we had some numbers to go with that picture. Last fiscal year, our department processed 1,397 applications for SNAP. The average caseload for SNAP for our department on a monthly basis is 2,121 cases. The average number of individuals in the county who receive SNAP, so what those households are comprised of, are 4,226 people. And in FY '25, we issued $8,744,471 in SNAP benefits to these households.
Want to repeat that number again, so everybody can hear that?
So I looked, just for comparison, I looked at the FY 2024 stats. These numbers are virtually unchanged. It was almost the exact same average for caseload, which means households, individuals, and for benefits issued. I just thought that was really interesting, that the numbers stayed very static. I did want to mention, in case it comes around to your ears, that a new thing that's being required by this state is that my workers now must verify expenses in households that are applying for or wanting to renew their SNAP benefits. Since the pandemic, we have been able to take client statements for what their expenses are. That is no longer the case. We have to have verification of those benef, of those expenses in order to continue benefits or to issue benefits. I think that's going to be new information for a lot of people. I'm not sure that the state has really done a great job of letting people know this. So we are going to help people understand that. I have a lot of information, but I wanted to focus on what questions you might have about the program or about the numbers that we've put out there.
I'm sorry, Mr. Thomas, yes?
I believe Ms. Snead said she wanted to focus on the questions we have, right?
Yes, please.
Okay. My, my question is more from the federal perspective in terms of funding. I'm not sure what the latest federal budget bill does to SNAP, but there was a great deal of discussion that it, it would reduce SNAP benefits totally. Do you have any projections on what those reductions would mean to Caroline?
I don't have a dollar figure for you. The State Department of Social Services has not operationalized that down to what the local impact is at the moment. The biggest thing that they're focusing on for us, because this is what they're seeing as the most immediate effect, is as a state, they have to reduce their error rate. So that includes us. Right now, the positive error rate, which means cases in which there were an overpayment, is 11%. And it has to be below 6% for the, for the state to get the highest, to, to get the appropriate reimbursement from the federal government to do this program. Now, I'm happy to report that Caroline's positive error rate is zero. So we are focused on meeting the requirements of the state of all the workers have gone through additional training. We're focused on case review. We want to maintain that low error rate. But I can certainly research that and look into getting more information for you.
Do you have, since you, you mentioned the state had an 11% error rate, when you find, find more data, would you tell us what the financial impact could that, of that could be?
That's what I want to look for.
Because if the state has an 11% error, even though Caroline is zero, we won't get money from the federal government, which means Caroline will be impacted. And I think a lot of us expect some impact at Caroline, one way or the other.
Yes.
And, and from these maps, there's a lot of areas that people wouldn't have expected to have SNAP benefits used in. So we need to make sure we take care of all the folks we can.
I will get that information.
Thank you, ma'am.
Any other questions, Mr.?
Ms. Snead, how are you?
Fine, thank you, and you?
The income for SNAP starts at, what's, what level, let's say for a household of two, then I'd like to go to a household of four, what is the income that makes them eligible for SNAP benefits?
So it's a little bit more complicated than just a straight income number, of course. We look at gross income. We look at deductions that we can take, so it becomes net income, and those deductions are shelter, medical expenses. There's a standard deduction and a few others. There's also a resource limit, so it's what cash you have on hand, what money you have in accounts, and things like that. And then also, we have to look at, at your categorical eligibility, meaning, does your household receive TANF, the monthly cash stipend? Does your household receive SSI? So that, it will put you in a different limit based on whether or not your household receiving a TANF or TANF authorized program such as SSI. So, for example, if you are in a household that does not receive TANF, and it's a household of two, then it's based off the federal poverty level, which there's 100% cutoff and 130% cutoff. Sorry, that's a lot of jargon, but it's $1,704 or 2215, depending on if you're using the 100% or 130%. I'm not a benefits worker.
I understand.
But if you're in a household that receives TANF, that actually raises your income limit to receive SNAP, so it can be as much as $3,407 per month. And that's all gross income, not the deductions.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Wendy? Any other questions? Thank you very much, Wendy. We appreciate it. And thank all behind the counter that you trained so well, that we said thank you for all they do.
No, it's really all their hard work that makes this all happen for everyone, and I'll research that data for you.
Thank you. All right, public comments. All right, takes us to the consent agenda.
Move the adoption to consent agenda.
We, we already adopted it, yeah. Yeah, we didn't, we didn't, that's right, the Speaker's round. All right. You've all had a chance to look at the consent agenda. Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? I don't know. All right, we're, we're about 20 minutes too early for public comment. So, Mr. Cully, do you think we go on into closed session now, or are we going to need more time than that?
I believe, I believe we could take care of one of the items of closed session, and still have the comeback for public comment, and then go back into closed session, but we could do the personnel.
I move that this board convenes in closed session pursuant to the consultation with legal counsel and personal exemptions of section 2.2-3711A188 of the Code of Virginia for consultation with the county attorney to discuss personal matters relating to county treasurer's office.
I have said.
You want to, should I do both in case we get started, or we're going to be happy with that one? What's that?
But we won't get far.
I think that's, that's probably enough for, for 20 minutes. And we can, we can take a little break before coming back at 7:30 if we've been assured.
All right.
And I'll second that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So moved. We are in closed session. We will be back as close to 7:30 as possible. We are in closed session. We will be back as close to 7:30 as possible.
All right, I am going to bring the meeting back to order and we need Reese to certify the closed hearing. Mr. Forehand, if you would pre- please read the research.
All righty, I move that Caroline County Board of Supervisors certified at the best of each member's knowledge that one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meetings requirement of Virginia law were discussed in closed meeting, to which this certification applies, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convened in the closed session were heard, discussed, or considered by the board. Can I get a second?
Second.
Motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Black, do you say certify?
I so certify.
Mr. Thomas?
I so certify.
Mr. Forehand?
I so certify.
I so certify.
I so certify.
Mr. Edgewood?
I can certify.
Thank you, gentlemen. All right, so we are back to our public comment section. At this time, you may come and speak for, state your name and your voting district, and have up to three minutes to speak on any topic you would like, as long as it is not something for public hearing tonight. And I don't think we have anything on tonight. So if anyone would like to speak, come on up right now. And, come on, Mary, I know you just said you'd be, come on. It's good to see you.
I have an amp, and I have an amp and pass out.
Sure. Just, Jackie, we were there and get that.
May I speak, or wait?
Yep, everybody has it down there.
Okay.
Good, thank you.
Good evening, Chairwoman Long and members of the board. Mary Hodge, Bowling Green District. I respectfully come here before you tonight, as I did on September 13th, 22, when you denied Urban Grid's CC Solar on 1,600 acres, right up the hill from me, by a 5-1 vote. I again came to the podium on November 10th, 22, asking you to deny CEP Solar's Woodford permit cited in the Matipanai River floodplain, and you denied it unanimously. On that night, you repealed the solar ordinance and prohibited flammable battery energy storage systems in our county, which is the next new energy and tax dollar wasting scam these developers are pitching. Thank you for each of these wise decisions. In March of '24, a FOIA revealed that Urban Grid was trying to surreptitiously usurp this board to waste taxpayer dollars and your time to revisit the solar ordinance so that they could attempt to reapply. Thank you again for recognizing the tactics employed and upholding your promise to Caroline citizens and keeping solar out of our county. But yet again, something was afoot when approximately 1,000 Caroline citizens received postcards in the mail this April inviting us to a panel discussion hosted by Urban Grid moderated by a political candidate asking questions of paid consultants. Among the minuscule turnout of 15 or so attendance at this event was the landowner in question, whose previous application had been denied. This landowner, who once told a member of the planning staff that if his CC Solar application didn't pass, he was cutting all his timber from line to line. And sure enough, he spitefully has. There are no trees left in Woodford, and last winter and the spring, the starving deer have eaten the leaves off of every tree in my yard, and the nearby soybean fields are a total crop loss. But trees will grow back and land, and the land will eventually heal without a poisoning expanse of solar panels upon it. Because I've researched the tactics that they have employed here and in other Virginia counties, I discovered in a recent FOIA that public officials were being contacted by letter and lied to. The letter signed by an agent for Urban Grid claimed that they had an application presented to our planning commission and a project soon to be before the Board of Supervisors. All of this, as we know, is impossible, as there are no ordinances to apply to. This has been substantiated by planning staff. I'm sharing a copy of the letter with you and want to thank the supervisors for not replying to Urban Grid and for recognizing this letter as a fabrication. I want to thank our Board of Supervisors for trusting the honesty and integrity of their fellow citizens and for the respect shown our wishes to preserve our landscape. I attended and spoke at the Commission on Electric Utility Regulation on May 22nd this year. The solar industry acknowledges it is dying between the loss of subsidies and extremely poor performance. Please continue to not allow yourselves to be pandered or lied to at the expense of taxpaying and voting citizens. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak at this time?
Take that tip for the future. Julia Yandura, Matipanai District. It's been a while since I've seen you all, but it's been quite busy. The Clean Arc and Avio Data Centers that were grandfathered in for, as by right in our county, submitted their applications to the SEC for their electrical transmission lines and substations. As a landowner directly impacted by those transmission lines, myself and my neighbor filed as per se in those cases and made fools of ourselves in court to go against them, because we are not lawyers, but it was the only thing that we had left. I'm here today not for your pity of that situation, but to make you aware that you're looking through at the, at the data centers through rose-colored glasses, and you've made some wrong assumptions. The transmission lines will not run north to south along I-95. The transmission lines will not run along existing right-of-ways. If a transmission line is along somebody's property line but not on it and within 100 feet of their house, they have no position to request compensation, even though it clearly impacts their property value. You have made some wrong assumptions, and I say this respectfully. I appreciate the ordinances that you guys have a past already. I want you to be aware and mindful of this as more data centers make applications. The transmission line was planned to go within 90 feet of my neighbor's front door. And had we not filed per se, had we not gone and made fools of ourselves and made many mistakes in court, it still would have been. It was what we had to do. But of course, that pushes the transmission line closer to my home. But it's also not right for it to be 90 feet within someone else's front door. And so this is the decisions that you guys make here. This is how they impact the people of Caroline County. It directly impacts the residents. And every new data center will require a new transmission line. The substations are substantial. I do want to send you all an email with the many things that I learned in court. It has not been ruled on, so I'm just, I've been trying to wait, but since we have open applications, I want to send what I can. I have a request. Could our planning department please provide an updated map, as they did in last November, of all the open applications of data centers in the county? That has not been updated in almost a year now, and as a resident, I would really like to see what it looks like now. And then I just ask that you consider the electrical utility for every data center application, because there's no area in our county that does not require a new substation and new transmission lines. Please be mindful of the capacity and the impact to other transmission lines. Please be mindful of the capacity and the impact to other residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak at this time? Anyone else that would like to speak? Seeing none, hearing none, public hearing is now closed. That takes us to another close, I guess, informational calendar. We're going to do all that before we go back to the closed session. Mr. Colley, please.
Somehow the podium didn't end up under the light.
You all are dark out there tonight.
Well, the light is over there, so the podium is way back this way. So even if you cut the light on, it wouldn't do any good, but anyway. The State Fair opens Friday night. Somebody probably already mentioned that. Bowling Green Clean Sweep is Saturday. Mr. Thomas's community meeting is Tuesday, the 30th.
Good try.
State Fair runs all the way through Sunday, the 5th. Mr. Underwood has mentioned he has a meeting, a constituent meeting, on the 9th. There it goes. State holiday, Columbus Day offices are closed on the 13th, and we're back here for our next board meeting, middle of the month, 14th, at 6:00 PM. The 17th is Music on the Green, and the 18th is Bowling Green Harvest Festival. And the last Saturday of the month always is Frog Level Festival. So those are the things that we had on the calendar for you. Most of those got mentioned earlier, but unless you know of anything else, that's all we really have to report.
All right. Anybody else have any other announcements? If not, Mr. Colley, unless I have missed anything, we're going to go ahead and do closing board comments now, because, and then after that, we will go into another closed meeting. But you all feel free to go home and not sit wait for us to come back if you'd like. You're welcome to, but you don't have to. All right. Mr. Forehand, do you have the piece of paper for another closed meeting? Oh, I'm sorry, comments. Mr. Black, I'll look that way. It still said your name.
No, I thought we were going to, at some point in time, discuss a meeting with the schools eventually, but I guess that's not for today, so.
Mr. Forehand?
Would like to meet either as a group or with schools to do, to start more discussions regarding additions or buildings or whatever that, if it's something we need to decide on ourselves, then we need to do that. But I think we need to have a path forward amongst us, and I think delaying any longer talking about it is going to be a good thing.
And I agree, we are planning on having a meeting. The thing is, we have two MOUs out that the lawyers are trying to merge together. So we all have the same sort of idea when we get together for a joint meeting. I think the board also wanted to have their own meeting before that time to discuss and certify and make more organized our thoughts. That might be a good idea to discuss in the future, too. Mr. Seal?
I have nothing.
Mr. Underwood?
Yes, Madam Chairman, I do have a couple. First, I'd like to thank Mr. Darnell Howard for setting up soccer camps at Lomassey Park. And I forget the two dates, but we brought in some nets for the field, and he'll be having two soccer camps for children on those dates at Lomassey Park. My second comment, Madam Chair, is I'm hoping that while we're continuing to talk about the needs of the county, that we make sure that we consider the needs for our fire and rescue and our sheriff needs. As the county grows, and we looked at most of the growth in the county, we see that there are a lot of folks moving to the county, and I don't think that we're really looking at the needs of a real 21st century sheriff's office and all of their needs for forensic and all the other updated materials they need to keep us safe. So I think that's something that I don't want to come off the front burner, but to make sure that we, in all ways, are looking at the needs of our sheriff's department. They haven't grown very much in the last 20 years, but yet our population has. If you look at your, not the scanner, but the county, the county phone call system, you'll see that the numbers are astronomical. Yet we're asking them to do the same job with basically fewer people because of the population growth. So we really need to make sure that we're looking at fire and rescue and the needs of our first responders, sheriff's office, as we talk about what is needed for state-of-the-art public safety building for them. And finally, Madam Chairman, the board was gracious enough to donate $1,000 to the electric stride for RAA. I'd like to have RAA come to the board so that we can see what are we getting in return. We're spending $30,000-plus a year, but I think you'll be surprised that we're getting hundreds of thousands of dollars worth of services for residents of Caroline County for basically $30,000. Like I said, they're servicing over 1,000 folks with visits to and from the doctors, who they take meals on wheels, and all of the services they provide. So I don't think we really look at what those services do for our senior citizens. So I'd like to have an opportunity to have the director come and talk about our return on investment from the rapid headache area on aging.
I think we certainly, it would be interesting to have them come and do a presentation like we have many other groups do. So we'll get staff to arrange that and put it on the agenda. And we do have the space study coming, which will help us with what the fire rescue needs, because they're running out of room, sheriffs, and what type of, you know, we're looking forward to and the growth as the county grows. So those are all good points. Thank you, Mr. Underwood. Any other comments? All right, at this time, Mr. Forehand, if you would take us into a closed meeting?
Long, I have a, I have two items of business. One is the motion for our results from the first closed meeting that I need to address. I move that this board instruct Caroline County staff and the county attorney to file the necessary pleadings and documents to initiate a special election on February 6th, 2026, for the Office of Treasurer of Caroline County, which will be vacant upon the October 5th, 2025 resignation of the current treasurer.
I wrote that quickly, February 3rd, 2026.
February 3rd, 2026.
That's the first Tuesday.
Well, it's, I've already said it. I don't need, I don't need it right now. So the date, the special election date will be amended to read February 3rd, 2026, for the Office of Treasurer of Caroline County.
Second. Motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, submit.
And with that, we will move into our second closed agenda. So I move that this board convene in closed meeting pursuant to legal counsel and contract exemptions of Section 2.2-3711A8 and 829 of the Code of Virginia for consultation with the county attorney and discussion with staff regarding the terms of a performance agreement proposed for a development project in the Reedy Church District and a draft MOU with the school board, where such discussion in open session would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the county.
I have a second. Have a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, so moved. We are in closed session. Thank you, everyone. Return home safely, and we'll meet everybody in the room back there.
David, you ready? We're gonna start, I think. All right, we are back from closed session. Mr. Foreham, would you please read us back into the meeting?
All right, I move that the Caroline County Board of Supervisors certify that to the best of each board member's knowledge that only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirement by Virginia law were discussed in closed meeting to which this certification applies and only such business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed session were heard, discussed, or considered by the board.
Do I have a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
You're out of the closed session.
This we are having a closed session. Mr. Black certifies. Mr. Thomas?
I so certify.
Mr. Foreham?
I so certify.
I so certify. Mr. Sealy?
I so certify.
Mr. Underwood?
I so certify.
Do I have?
Motion to adjourn. Second.
A motion to adjourn, all in favor? Say aye. Any opposed? All right, we are adjourned. Thank you, gentlemen.